Joining us this evening. Join us from District Four, we have Gary Newkirk and Mike Frost. Join us from District Five, we have Benjamin Beebe and Michael Villar. A few ground rules for tonight's event. Today is a forum and not a debate. We ask that you please respect other candidates and the forum format. Address responses to the audience, not to the moderator or other candidates. Respond only to the questions asked to you. Respect allotted time available to answer questions. Each candidate will be given a two-minute opening statement. Each candidate will be presented a question and will then have 90 seconds to answer that question. Official timer or chamber staff members will display a yellow card when you have 15 seconds left and a red stop sign when your time is up. Please stop speaking when you see the red card. If you don't, we'll unfortunately have to mute you and move on to the next candidate. Finally, each candidate will be given a one minute, one minute for closing statement. For our viewing audience, please note there's no campaigning allowed during this event. We reserve the right to remove anyone from this virtual meeting who does not follow the rules. So now let's begin with opening statements from our candidates. Your two minutes will begin as soon as you start speaking. First up from District Four is Mr. Gary Newkirk. Gary?
Good evening, everybody. Thanks to the Chamber and to SDG&E for hosting the forum this evening and for all of you showing up to give us a chance to share a little bit about us. My name is Gary Newkirk. I'm running for District Four City Council and my wife and I have been, we bought our house in 1997 in, on Blue Lantern, mid-century beach place that when we bought it, I told my wife, "I'm leaving feet first," and just said, "Please don't make it happen too quickly." I'm an Orange County native, grew up in Anaheim. My dad owned the local bike shop, so I kind of grew up in a retail family. My wife is from Huntington Beach. She's a speech-language pathologist at a local middle school. And our son Nick, Dana Point's the only home that he knows, other than currently he's in his third year at UC Santa Barbara and enjoying the Isle of Vista lifestyle. You know, his life is centered around the beach, countless days and hours at our local beaches, enjoying the local hills for mountain biking and hiking, and at the local ballpark with my fellow candidate, Michael Villar, at the Dana Point Youth Baseball, spending really many joyous hours teaching kids our love for baseball. Went to UCLA, I've got a degree in economics, and my career path took me out of college. I was a stockbroker for a number of years where I kind of learned my chops in the finance world and kind of dovetailed that into working as a sports photojournalist, which took me around the world. Had a great time. My community involvement began in '05. I was on the task force that solved an ongoing problem that was variances. And then I was on the planning commission for five and a half years where I really kind of learned city process and how everything works in the city. So I look forward to sharing more views with you and thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. Next up from District Four, Mr. Mike Frost.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Mike Frost. My wife and I moved out here 18 years ago to South County, Orange County. We bought our first home on Amber Lantern in the heart of the Lantern Village in 2009. Since then, I've been very active in the community, primarily on the Lantern Village Association, but also appointed to two city subcommittees, including the Parking and Traffic Subcommittee, as well as the Financial Review Committee, which is in my wheelhouse. Career-wise, I am in corporate finance. We've got two kids planning to go up to the Spanish immersion elementary and eventually, Spanish immersion up RH Dana, up on Chula Vista, and eventually up to RH Dana. These last, these last 10 years, I've really grown a genuine appreciation for local policy and, and I love it. And that's personally why I'm running. I'm going to bring two attributes to the council and to the city. The first is a solutions-oriented mindset. That's my personality, but also that's just business, right? And then the second is, is what I think is a well-rounded sort of understanding of what a council member truly provides, truly does on the council. And that's from years of learning, sitting on the other side of this forum. That's from years of going to city council meetings. And I think we provide three roles, perform three roles, advisory, all of them. The first is a strategy role. How do we place ourselves relative to Laguna Beach? How do we place ourselves relative to San Clemente? What is our brand? How are we connecting our three major assets, commercial assets, Lantern District, the Harbor, and Doheeny? The second role is an operational role geared mostly towards finance and policy. And the third role is community engagement, in which case it's about listening to the folks. For example, we've got a stop sign we need to put on, put in at Amber, at Violet Lantern and.
Thank you, Mike. Your time is, your time is up. Next up from District Five is Mr. Benjamin Beebe.
Ben, we can't hear you.
We're not getting any, any.
If you're on your phone, you might need to hit an unmute button in the corner.
I can go first and then he can.
Yeah, well, hang on just one second. And then with that, let's go District Five, Mr. Michael Villar. Michael?
Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you for joining us and thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for putting this together. I do appreciate the opportunity to kind of introduce myself. Michael Villar, running for Dana Point City Council, District Five, AKA Capital Beach. Born and raised up in the Bay Area, youngest of seven kids, really strong influence from my family. When you're the youngest of seven, right, you learn a lot. After that, graduated, went to UCLA, got a degree there way back in 1992, so like Gary, also a Bruin. Got my commission in the Marine Corps after that. Was a helicopter pilot in the Marine Corps for 20 years, stationed at Tustin and El Toro before they closed down. And I'm sure a lot of you remember that base, really strong in, in the community. Got a master's degree in computer science while I was in the Marine Corps, fortunate enough to end my career at Camp Pendleton and, well, first before that, at Miramar. I was stationed at Miramar. That's where, when I bought my home here in Capital Beach in 2003, lived here ever since. And then I ended my career at Camp Pendleton. So when I retired from the Marine Corps, I was already here in Capital Beach. And so I, my, my wife and I, it was a no-brainer for us to stay here. While I was at UCLA, I met my beautiful wife Denise, been married for 25 years, we've got three kids, one at Gary's son's age, used to play baseball against him. He's in college, two daughters that are in high school. What I, what I really want to, want to express to you is how connected I am to the Capital Beach community. Been coaching down at Dana Point Youth Baseball for 10 seasons, coached AYSO Soccer for 10 seasons, was a board member there. Been a member at St. Edward's Catholic Church since we moved here in 2003, usher there on Sunday mornings. But my biggest connection is to Palisades. Palisades Elementary School is the bedrock of Capital Beach. All of my kids went there. My wife was PTA president there for years. I volunteer there for years, know a bunch of families and teachers there. So thank you very much and I'm looking forward to this forum.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we'll go back to District Five, Mr. Benjamin Beebe, and I see the red sign. There you go. Sorry, we still can't, still can't hear you.
And I think in the confirmation email you got, there's probably a phone number that you can call into. And so maybe if you want to try connecting to audio that way, and then maybe we'll just get started with the questions and give you a chance to log on and we can do this a little bit later. It's cool. Sorry, guys.
Very good. You always have to be flexible during COVID-19. I think we are right now. So here we go. The questions presented today were either directly submitted from local citizens or are a combination of questions posed about key issues. I'll ask the same question to each of our candidates, but we'll then ask them in varying order. We will begin this evening with a question for both candidates in District Four, and we will, we will start with Mr. Newkirk. So first question is, "The city of Dana Point, like all cities across our country, are facing significant budget shortfalls. The city is currently estimating a reduction in budget and revenue of $6 million for fiscal year 2021. In your opinion, how can Dana Point balance its budget and please cite specific revenue enhancements and expenditure cuts you would propose?" So again, at this time, this question goes to Mr. Newkirk. 90 seconds.
Thank you very much. You know, we're in an environment right now that is globally unprecedented and everybody's scrambling to find answers. And it's stressing families, individuals, businesses, cities, states, and our federal government. I wish there was an easy answer to this question, but quite frankly, these budget shortfalls are going to come through some long, hard work. I think we're, we're in this for the long haul. This is not going to be a quick recovery. As a city, we need to do everything we can to offset the shortfall in our transit occupancy tax, which is such a huge percentage of our revenue. And that's going to incorporate bringing our businesses and our residents together in collaborative ways to get more residents doing things in town and spending money, maybe even staycations, encouraging residents' nights at our restaurants as things loosen a little bit, have festivals and fairs down where we can and block off areas, whether it's still Prado or down into the harbor, and encouraging vacant shops to maybe lessen their rent levels and do, you know, the ability for craft fairs or, you know, anything that can really help everybody, because we're in this together. The individuals are as stressed, stressed as the cities on a city level. We're going to have to tighten our belt. We need to make sure health and safety are safeguarded, but we might have to have, face some short-term cuts in other places.
Thank you, Mr. Newkirk. Same question goes to Mr. Frost.
Just for, just for background, fiscal year, our fiscal year ends, end of June. So fiscal year 19, we were short, oh, about three, three and a half million dollars. We plugged that budget with about 75% reserves and we were able to cut expenditures about 25%. Fiscal year 20, we are about six and a half million dollars short. We dropped that down to, oh, about 60, almost 50% reserves and the rest expenditure cuts. And those expenditure cuts were actually all across the board. Lots of little, lots of little savings everywhere. Should be noted, we're saving, oh, almost 900 grand in salaries. But we've also cut where it makes sense. We prioritize our services from high to low and obviously sort of the nice-to-haves are the first expenditures to go. Moving forward, look, we're, we're, we're a city. We're not exactly a nimble organization where we can go ahead and find quick revenues. Unfortunately, that's just not who we are. We've got to lean on getting tourism back up. And it may, it'll, it's going to really start with sitting with the GMs and number one, figuring out why we can't get Marriott back up and running. So again, we can do pop-up shops, we can do all these little things, but let's, let's focus on really what drives our revenue and that's tourism.
Thank you very much. Let's, let's try with opening statement for, for Mr. Beebe. Benjamin. And you're.
Do we have audio?
Yes, we do.
Beautiful. Wonderful. Sorry, you're going to have to bear with me. I'm down in San Diego. My, my children are down here halftime and I came down today to spend some time with their mother and them and enjoy ourselves. So I apologize for the inconvenience. Now to the good stuff. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for taking time from your busy schedules to meet virtually with us today. I'm honored just to be nominated for Dana Point City Council and now to be considered for your votes as well. My name is Benjamin Tyler Beebe. I'm a son, brother, father, partner, scholar, tradesman. I relocated to Southern California over a decade ago and have a strong connection to the region. I am very grateful to be able to raise my children here and proud to call Capistrano Beach home. I'm running for city council as I feel that is where I can be of maximum service to our city. I look forward to hearing your concerns, answering your questions, and hopefully serving as Dana Point District Five Capistrano Beach Representative for the next four years.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Nope, no, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. This next question is going to go to District Five, and we're going to start with Mr. Villar. Short-term rentals have been a contentious issue in Dana Point for many years, with a moratorium established on new permits that went into effect in 2016. Currently, the city's revised budget for next fiscal year estimates that short-term rentals, TOT, will bring in $575,000. How do you think Dana Point should address the issue of short-term rentals moving forward? And do you believe citizens should be allowed to vote on short-term rental ordinance? Mr. Villar?
How did I know that you would ask a short-term rental question? There's a, there's a surprise, right? Short-term rentals, big deal for us, especially our two districts, District Four and District Five. Over 70% of all the short-term rentals are in our district. And so last week, when I found out that there was going to be a, the planning commission was going to, was going to put a meeting together, they're going to start a workshop to work on short-term rentals, I actually reached out to Gary, to Mike, and to Ben. And unfortunately, I couldn't get ahold of Ben, but Mike, Gary, and I put a letter together and said, "Hey, look, you know what? It's probably best that you guys stop this until our election is over so that we can weigh in. We need to have a voice in short-term rentals from District Four and from District Five." And I really appreciated that we were able to get together. We may not agree on what we want the outcome to be, but we certainly agree that we need to have a voice at the table for, so for Capital Beach, that's what I plan on doing. I can, I can tell you that I'm a residents-first guy. I know that our residents have issues with short-term rentals. I think that there is room in Capital Beach and Dana Point for short-term rentals at a very, at a restricted kind of a level. We need to define what those restrictions are, but I 100% think that the voters, our residents, should be allowed to vote on what the ultimate decision is going to be for short-term rentals. I think we can put a, a very cohesive team together of pro-short-term rentals and those that are against short-term rentals. We can come up with solutions that fit for everybody, but ultimately, it needs to go to the voters so that they can decide on something that's as important as that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. Same question to Mr. Beebe.
In regards to short-term rentals, I've heard compelling arguments from both sides of the aisle pertaining to the issue. I'm inclined to think in terms of the greater good. I can see both the potential benefit for our economy as well as the possible risks inherent in opening our community to people that we don't know, strangers. I'm confident that if we decide to embrace this opportunity to positively impact our economy, we can construct legislation around the industry that will allow our citizens to feel comfortable and confident calling Dana Point home. Within the confines of our economic system, without demand, there will be no supply. We should further explore the fiscal ramifications pertaining to this issue and make an educated decision that will benefit as much of our citizenry as possible. I do appreciate Mr. Villar reaching out and I apologize for not responding. I've been having some techno, technological difficulties, as you can see, based on the beginning of this call. I recently got a new computer and I don't think my email and, and applications are working quite properly. So again, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in hearing all sides from my community and weighing in on the city council for our best interest. So thanks for the time.
Thank you. The next question, we'll go back to District Four. "The Visit Dana Point Board comprised of our major resorts recently voted to temporarily suspend operations of the marketing agency designed to attract group travel and tourism to Dana Point. The city is anticipating a significant shortfall in tourism revenue that makes up a sizable portion of the city budget. How can city leaders prioritize and facilitate healthy tourism in Dana Point while balancing the quality of life for residents?" Mr. Frost, you're up first.
Yep, yep. Good question. Yeah, well, I'll tell you what, it makes sense. They, they, they put the T-Bid on hold. We are still, we are still gathering that revenue, but look, the expenditures per month for the T-Bid, it was running high relative to, to what we had. Look, we do need to get all three hotels back up and running. That's, that's critical. And that really requires city leaders and other stakeholders sitting down with the GMs and most likely coming up with a consistent, comprehensive message of how Dana Point handles health and safety. Right? What is going to attract a visitor to Dana Point's hotels as opposed to San Diego's? Right? We have to, and all, most other businesses, right? We have to think of driving revenue through that prism of health and safety. How are we going to make people feel more safe? As far as expenditures, look, we go through and we prioritize our expenditures from nice-to-haves to have-to-haves to must-haves, right? And so we're clearly going to cut expenditures where we have nice-to-haves, really no different than we've done fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20. Thank you.
Next up, same questions, Mr. Newkirk.
Let me unmute there. Thank you very much. The first challenge is getting people to want to travel, and that's going to require a continued diligence to getting the COVID crisis under control. And then secondly, we kind of have to reassess who our visitors are going to be for a while. There's going to be a reluctance of people to get on planes. I think visitors are going to be drive-cations, they're not going to be, or staycations. They're not going to be as many international and even national travelers from a long distance. So it's refocusing. Where do we market? How do we market? Who are we trying to attract? And that comes to those local businesses, the hotels, the restaurants coming up with, and in collaboration with the city, you know, going out to the inland empire and further out to attract people to Dana Point, which has always, you know, been, the occupancy rates have always been great just because it's such a wonderful destination. It's an opportunity for our local residents and regional residents to come and enjoy our amenities and help, you know, restore some of those transit occupancy taxes and getting them to visit our shops and our restaurants and drive a reason to come back. And we can do a lot of that through the new, you know, what's not new, but our, our social media efforts, and we can do it at a lower cost than a lot of the higher-cost methodologies that we have to spend to draw national and international travelers.
Very good. Thank you. The next question's for District Five. "The COVID-19 pandemic has had an immersive impact on the livelihood of citizens and businesses throughout Dana Point, with impacts expected to last well into 2021. If elected to council, what economic recovery-based policies and programs would you propose locally to assist Dana Point businesses?" Mr. Beebe?
I, I believe that Mr. Villar and I are on a similar wavelength here in that, that we need a line-by-line analysis of our, of our budget. We both come from a business background and, and our, our function is to analyze P&L statements and find areas of opportunity to save businesses money. So I, I think that, I think that as a whole, I will be a diligent and, and conservative, fiscally conservative representative for our city. I'm, I'm interested in, in finding the, the common ground that binds us in listening to my constituents and, and finding creative ways to minimize expenditures while maximizing flow-through. Simple as that.
Thank you very much. Same question, Mr. Villar.
Yeah, thank you for that question. You know, the first, the first thing that has to happen is, is we've got to safely start returning back to some sort of normal. And that means all of us doing our part to ensure that we're, we're driving down the threat of this virus, right? We got to make sure that we understand that this virus isn't going anywhere. It's not going to go away by itself. So we need to first make our residents feel safe so that we can start opening our businesses. So, so my focused attention is going to be on ensuring that we can safely open up businesses so that we can start getting back to some sort of normal. And then we do have to go through the budget and ensure that our expenditures all have a good, valid reason for us making an expense so that we know that what we're spending on is actually going to be used in order to help our economy thrive. You know, we, we live in such a wonderful, dynamic place, right? We have such great small businesses and larger chains that are here in Dana Point that we want to see open, we want to see those mom-and-pop shops get opened up. We want to make sure that restaurants are open, hotels are open, like Mike's been talking about throughout the evening tonight. And I totally agree with him, right? We've got to make sure that we're doing that, though, in the safest way possible so that we don't go backwards and that we don't fall back into the same problems that, that we're having now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next question's for District Four. "Homelessness has been an issue for quite some time and was cited in a recent resident study as the citizen's number-one concern. Outside of the outreach program that was created, what efforts do you think we should be taking to address our homeless issue moving forward?" Mr. Newkirk?
Thank you very much. Homelessness is an issue that plagues all of our, our country, our, our state, our county. And it's a problem that has, you know, such a myriad of causes, from job loss to health, drug addiction, bad luck. It makes the treatment very difficult, challenging. I think we're on the right path. I think the key thing is trying to create an environment of outreach like we are and getting the first touch, ideally with our homeless population, with somebody that, that builds trust with these people and can help facilitate change, convincing them to accept help if they're resistant and helping find them places to go. So I think we need to do more of the same. I think, you know, we need to invest more resources. We need to find additional partners at the county level that will help to house the population. And we need to have our places of worship and, and every other organization try to engage with this population. I don't think, you know, there's any additional things that I can think of. You know, there's the Mercy House we're dealing with, there's other groups we can reach out to and add to our already great outreach efforts. I think we need to do a lot more of the same with an increased level of passion and, and compassion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Frost, same question.
I would, I would agree. I think the city itself has done a fantastic job. Again, I don't, it's not as though we solved homelessness in Dana Point. We've created a mechanism to manage it each year, no different than our expenditures for public safety, right? It is a component that is inherent in our community. Every year, we will budget for it. Every year, we will focus on it. As far as what we can do further to help the situation, don't forget, we've got a member on the Orange County Finance, our Housing and Finance Trust, right? Where we're taking a federal and state dollars, we're determining long-term affordable home projects within Orange County. And I forget the, the, the current council member on it. But anyway, we have, we certainly have leverage and direction in where those funds are spent, as in hopefully in South County. Additionally, we can lean on the county, the county itself. Again, we've got a lot of funds up at the county and with a good relationship, we can certainly start to sort of permanently house wraparound services up at county or South County shelters. Thank you.
Okay. This next question is going to go on to District Five. "Silver-living homes have popped up in many neighborhoods throughout Southern California. State and federal law regulate and protect silver-living homes. Dana Point's approach, approach thus far has been to force unlicensed operators to obtain state licenses when recorded." to obtain state licenses when required. In the process, nearly two dozen sober living homes have closed in Dana Point rather than comply with state licensing requirements. In your opinion, do you agree with the city's approach? Or do you have an alternate plan to regulate future potential sober living homes in Dana Point? Mr. Valar, question goes to you.
Yeah, great question. Thanks for asking that. Sober living homes is another issue in Capo Beach. We love Capo Beach because of our neighborhoods, right? We get to know our neighbors. So so for me, it it is about regulation and it's about compliance, right? I I'm a compassionate person. All all of Capo Beach, our residents here are are super compassionate. I know all of Dana Point is, right? People have addictions, they have issues, and we like to see them, we like to help them, we want to see them resolve those issues. But it can't come at the expense of safety in our neighborhoods. So I I do agree that regulation and and enforcing that regulation is key in order to allow sober living homes to 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 exist and to and to be part of this community. But if they're out of compliance, I think enforcement of compliance becomes a big issue. Nobody wants to 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 have an issue come up, you know, in their neighborhood with a sober living home and they and they call for somebody to come out to enforce and it and it doesn't happen or it's it's delayed. So, you know, our our neighborhoods and our houses are a big issue for us as residents. Our homes are our biggest investment. We want to make sure that they're protected. We want to make sure that our neighborhoods are protected. So I I do think that regulation of sober living homes is the right approach.
Thank you. Mr. Beebe, this question is now posed to you.
Substance use disorder is an ADA-recognized disability. So I am a less is more sort of guy when it comes to legislation and bureaucracy. I'm going to say that on on this issue, we may have to heed higher authority. This is, this is not an issue that is city by city or state by state. Substance use disorder, as I said, is ADA-recognized as a as a mental disorder. So these are people that need our assistance so that they can be productive members of society. The fact that these houses would rather fold than comply with the regulations is an indication of their commitment to substance use disorder treatment. I'm committed to getting our constituency the help that they need to be productive in our community. That's what I'm committed to.
Thank you very much. This next question is going to go to District Four. Town center is currently under construction. Renovations and construction will soon be underway in the Dana Point Harbor. And the Doheny Village revitalization project is underway with additional reviews to come. There are a lot of strong opinions about development in Dana Point and an obvious desire to protect the small-town charm of Dana Point while balancing the need to revitalize and encourage a more vibrant business climate and community. One issue that tends to arise with new projects are the developers seeking variances to build bigger buildings and in some cases, providing less parking currently required by the city's regulations. What is your view of development in Dana Point as a whole? And how would you address variance request? Mr. Frost?
Well, to be honest with you, it's it's really not much of an issue now, right? I mean, our development standards are in there. There's there's going to be no variances granted. What I what I would say is, I have no problem going back and ensuring the development standards that we have in certain areas push developers to build the products that we want, right? One of the major issues with the Lannan District right now, and really has been since the original town center, is the development standards. If you go to underwrite those those projects, it's certainly more profitable to consolidate lots and meet the meet the development standards. You you basically can't underwrite a small lot. Now, there's certainly logistic issues with with going out and getting capital for larger projects. But I I think we've got a responsibility to design development standards to the narrative of the town, the original town center plan. And and actually, I would have no, in theory, no problem in dropping the density to meet other requirements such as parking, et cetera. Look, I do want to see the the town evolve. I do want to see it improve. My family lives probably closer than anybody to the Lannan District. We want to invite investment. We want to invite enthusiasm. And we, as a city, can develop development standards, create development standards that push towards the products we want.
Thank you very much. Mr. Newkirk, question goes to you.
Thank you very much. The Town Center Plan is probably the best place to to really look at right now. It has history. It has a formalized plan. And it was put into the law in 2006 with development standards and design standards, which which stated how much you could build, not what you had to build. There were developers that came in and cobbled together lots, as we're witnessing right now with the big project in Town Center. But right out of the gate, the first thing they did is they came and they said, it doesn't pencil out, we need more. Variants, as you mentioned, were immediately thrown at at the Planning Commission, which I was on at the time. And they included an extra floor, four instead of three, reduced parking, and originally excessive height. So we heard that project over a four-month period between July and October of 2014. And through those negotiations, currently, at that time, the Majestic Company brought every, a lot of things back down to reality. They they put the envelope at the right height. They had overheight elements with for a roof deck. But they wanted that extra floor and they wanted reduced parking. So my view on variances is it's not for convenience. It's a very strict legal standard. There's eight standards and for convenience, it needs to be by hardship. It didn't meet that that's that level. We denied it. And the Planning Commission, it was overturned. We need to hold to our guns with the planning, whether it's in in Town Center, and small projects can happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next question is for District Five. The city of Dana Point, like all cities across our our county, are facing significant significant budget shortfalls. The city is currently estimating a reduction in budgeted revenue of $6 million for fiscal year 2021. How, in your opinion, can Dana Point balance its budget? And please cite specific revenue enhancements and expenditure cuts you would propose. Mr. Beebe?
Again, a line-by-line analysis of the the budget is in order. We do have to analyze every penny we spend. I'm a believer that that the government works for us. And my main concern is to serve my constituents. I have a number of creative ideas, but I'm not trying to push things on people. I'm trying to listen to what our business owners need and our and our constituents need and bring creative, problem-solving solutions to these issues. I I know that we have a number of opportunities to create jobs in in Southern California if we're creative. And that's what I aim to do. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Valar, same question.
Yeah, thanks for that question. You know, it's, we're talking about budgets and and recovery. We are going to have to tighten our belt and and make some tough decisions. But I can tell you, you know, when it comes to security of our neighborhoods, security of our kids, that that's not going to get cut. When it comes to, you know, parks and recs and 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 maintaining our beautiful parks here, you know, I wouldn't like to see that cut, but but everything else, it's on the table. Everything else needs to be looked at, like Ben says, line by line. I do agree with them, right? We need to look at our budget line by line and ask the question, does does this expenditure help us in our recovery? If the answer is no, then we need to take a hard look at it. And and we're going to have to dig deep in order to do that. But we we can't do it at the expense of security and in in keeping Dana Point a place where people want to come. Because we do, like like you talked about earlier with the tourism question, right? We need people to come here. We need them to feel safe. We need to have activities for them to come. And we open up safely, right? We're going to, we're going to enjoy our Dana Point life. So I don't have anything really specific that I would say, ah, that's got to get cut. But I know my fellow candidates agree with me where it's, everything's on the table. We're, we're going to look at everything really hard and we're going to have to make some very tough decisions. And I'm not afraid to do that. So I I appreciate the question. I wish I had a better, specific answer, but but it's something that we'll have to look at.
Thank you very much. Next question will be to District Four. Short-term rentals have been a contentious issue in Dana Point for quite a while, with a moratorium established on new permits that went into effect in 2016. Currently, the city's revised budget for the next fiscal year's estimate that short-term rental TOT will bring in $575,000. How do you think Dana Point should address the issue of short-term rentals moving forward? And do you believe citizens should be allowed to vote on a short-term rental ordinance? Mr. Newkirk?
Thank you very much. Clearly, in in our districts, short-term rentals are a key issue. And I would think a much larger percentage than than the survey that was done. We have 31% of the short-term rentals in District Four in the city as a whole. And while they do bring in a lot of TOT, we have the biggest shortfall from our hotels. That's where we need to really focus to get the TOT back. I think short-term rentals, we haven't done anything with it for a long time. We've just been sitting and watching. We, the city has adopted a policy where they've really been afraid to try to formalize anything for fear of getting sued. There are cities that have that have carried the torch, Santa Monica. Carlsbad actually just implemented one recently, and there's a new member of our community that lives in in our district that helped write it. And he's offered his assistance, and he says, you know, we need to do it right, we need to do it carefully. But that includes, to Michael's point earlier, the the appearance right now is that we have three members of the city council that don't live in the district where 73% of the short-term rentals are. We need to slow the process down. It's a little interesting that we've kind of fast-tracked and created a subcommittee that will selectively talk to residents to try to come up with a a pilot program that'll lock us in for three years. We need to have an open collaborative discussion with all stakeholders to come up with a good solution that results in the residents having a say and vote in the decision of this. It really impacts their largest investment, which is their home.
Thank you very much. Same question, Mr. Frost?
Thank you. Gosh, I I am the last candidate to speak on this issue. But I'm the first one to bring up the Coastal Commission. I I think we do have a responsibility to talk to our neighbors and clearly define the issue. And that is, at least a significant portion of our community is under the authority of the the state jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission, who has identified affordable, short-term lodging as a requirement in these beach cities. Now, Carlsbad happened to implement a short-term rental policy outside the coastal zone, and that's certainly an opportunity. But but I actually think, and perhaps some of the details aren't ironed out, but from my understanding, the the council directed the Planning Commission to begin analyzing and working through all the different issues, talking to many stakeholders, analyzing whether we should have one straight, one city policy or we should have one within the coastal overlay or and one outside. I I think the city is now going down the correct path. And yes, Mr. Valar wrote a letter hoping to push it off for one month, and I I don't have a problem with that. However, no decisions, no design of the pilot program is going to be made anytime soon. So I do think we're going down the right path of reaching out and analyzing all the potential solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. And next question will be for District Five. The city is anticipating a significant shortfall in tourism revenue that makes up a sizable portion of the city's budget. How can city leaders prioritize and facilitate healthy tourism in Dana Point while balancing the quality of life for residents? Mr. Valar?
Yes, I want to take you back on a trip not so long ago. Think of last summer, Dana Point. We've got trolleys going, we've got concerts in the park, we've got movies in the park, we've got Doheny Blues Festival. We've got all of these great things that happen in Dana Point. And the reason we live here and the reason we love it and the reason why people come here. We need to get back to normal Dana Point. Just like I said earlier, we need to all do our part to ensure that we do that as quickly but as safely as possible. Once we do that, our doors are going to open and people are going to come to Dana Point like they did in the past. And we're all going to love and enjoy what we used to have, what Dana Point was just just last summer. I don't know that we need to do anything really specific. We just need to try to get back to normal. But I do agree with with Mike Frost in that our hotels need to be a priority, right? We got to get our hotels up and running and people in there, people swimming in the pool and coming down to the restaurants and enjoying the beach and all that stuff that goes along with it. We we got to make sure that we are opening up the doors and opening up that avenue of approach so that folks can come, can start coming here and starting enjoying the beach and enjoying our our beautiful city. I can't wait to get back to that, and and that's what I'm I'm hoping to do here as a as a city council member, is to help us do that again as safely as possible.
Thank you. Same question, Mr. Beebe?
Great question. Thank you for asking that. In my approach to economic recovery, be multifaceted. First, I'll listen to our local business owners as they have the best understanding of the unique opportunities specific to their industries. What works for a neighborhood nail salon may not be right for a local print shop. I will seek to understand how I can best facilitate expedient economic recovery for all our local businesses. Second, I would work in cooperation with local, state, and federal agencies to ensure that our local businesses stay open and have access to the emergency relief funding available to them as small business owners. I'll advocate for a vibrant economy in Dana Point. First, I work in cooperation with city council members and staff to find creative ways to balance the budget deficit. And I would work diligently and tirelessly towards Dana Point's continued economic health and stability.
Okay, thank you very much. Next question is for District Four. The COVID-19 pandemic has had an immersive impact on the livelihood of citizens and businesses throughout Dana Point, with impacts expected to last well into 2021. If elected to council, what economic recovery-based policies and programs would you propose locally to assist Dana Point businesses? Mr. Frost?
Well, I I think the council ultimately has sort of two two methods to help small business. The first and foremost is, and it's a bit of a longer term, but it's building the brand, working with business leaders, including the Chamber, but also the GMs of the hotels, building the brand, making sure that our small business understands the direction of our brand, just as much as the hotels do. That helps sort of long-term planning for businesses. In the short term, really, we're already doing it, and we should always be doing it anyway. It's removing bureaucracy. Really, what, by allowing Kraft House and Coastal Kitchen and and other restaurants to go ahead and put tables on the sidewalk or put tables in the parking lot, is just another way to, is just basically removing bureaucracy, right? And so whether whether our small businesses, somebody's investing in doing a tenant fit-out. Somebody's just, Dana Point Hardware wants to put a tent out in their parking lot for Saturday sale. Look, we need to be flexible and and willing to remove as much bureaucracy, which we should be doing anyway. Remove as much bureaucracy from the process for small businesses as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question, Mr. Newkirk?
Thank you very much. You know, I think on this issue, there's a lot of consensus among all of the the candidates. Mine starts at a little different point. You know, my background in studying economics and my business background has always been more the long game has always been more the long game and not the first two minutes of the game. And I think we are not going to recover from this until we come up with a, a long-term. We, we, we help contribute to the long-term abatement of this, this pandemic. And that starts at a local, social, individual level. And once we do that, people will want to return and start to travel a little bit where our hotels can open. We can get back to those days that, that Michael Villar talked about when everything's firing on all cylinders. Currently though, you know, we're gonna have to look at dribs and drabs. There's nothing that's gonna bring us back all together. I think, you know, cutting the bureaucracy, the red tape, fast-tracking a lot of these permits, maybe even looking at adding to these on a long-term basis. I mean, it's a great model to be able to have restaurants outdoors on the parking lots, curbside pickup. These are all resident and visitor-serving things that could bring long-term benefit to the community. But, but to get through the, through this slog that we're entering, it's going to require some, some tightening of the belt, some restraint, and also focusing on collaboration at the upper levels and really researching to find out any aid and assistance we can get at the, the county, state and federal levels to assist our businesses that will ultimately help our residents and bring our community back to where it should be and will be.
Thank you very much. This next question's gonna go to District Five. Homelessness has been an issue for quite some time and was cited in a recent resident study as a citizen's number one concern. Outside of the outreach program that was created, what efforts do you think we should be taking to address our homeless issue moving forward? Mr. Beebe, question is for you.
Homelessness is a very complex issue. I, I believe Gary already mentioned there's a number of ways that a person can end up dealing with that, that particular issue. My goal for 2020 was to start a nonprofit organization kind of aimed at, at outreach for substance abuse, substance use disorder and homelessness. I'm working with my, my younger sister, who's very talented, future lawyer, to make this a reality. And she's been very patient with me, given the current COVID-19 crisis and, and now this endeavor into city politics. But that's how I'm gonna address it. I'm gonna start a nonprofit organization and actually work towards a resolution for the issue. I don't believe that it's, that it's a personal weakness or something like that, that lands people on the street. I think the majority of the time, it's much more, much more layered than that. So I'm very compassionate towards these sorts of things. And I'm interested in really working towards long-term solutions. So that's what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna start a nonprofit organization and, and actually try and solve the problem rather than just talking about it.
Dwayne, we can't hear you. I knew somebody would fall into the mute trap.
As would you know, it was me. Thank you. Hey, Mr. Villar, the question's now yours.
Yeah, great, great question. And Ben, thank you for your compassion towards the homeless situation. And if you need some, some help on a nonprofit, please give me a call. That, that's, that's the spirit of not only Dana Point but Capo Beach, right there, right? The reason why homelessness is the number one issue, not because it's the biggest issue in Dana Point, but because we're such a compassionate residents, we have such compassionate residents here. We, we don't have a policy where we just take our homeless and bust them to Anaheim or to Santa Ana or to Laguna Beach, or we don't bust them out of the city, right? We come up with programs here to take care of our homeless folks with dignity, with respect, with humanity. And that's how you, you make ends and that's how you start to attack this problem. You know, I've lived here since 2003. In my opinion, I've seen the homelessness actually go down. We've actually made some strides. I'm not the kind of person that thinks that, oh, well, when you run for city council, you gotta, you gotta just go ahead and negate everything that city council has done and come up with your own things. I think city council's done a great job with homelessness. I really do. I, I think that the outreach programs is the way to go. I think you have to develop relationships with people and you have to understand them at a much deeper level, rather than just say, hey, get a job. Why don't you have a job? It's not that simple, right? There's lots of reasons why people fall into homelessness. We need to be compassionate about that. And I agree with the way city council has handled that. And I hope that I can enhance that if I'm lucky enough to, to be elected to city council.
Thank you. Back to District Four. Sober living homes have popped up in many neighborhoods throughout Southern California. State and federal law regulate and protect sober living homes. Dana Point's approach thus far has been to force unlicensed operators to obtain state licenses when required. In the process, nearly two dozen sober living homes have closed in Dana Point rather than comply with state licensing requirements. Over the last few years, some nearby cities ran into legal troubles because they enacted stricter regulations. Do you agree with the city's approach? Or do you have an alternate plan to regulate future potential sober living homes in Dana Point? Mr. Newkirk.
Thank you very much. You know, I, I agree with Benjamin that, you know, addiction is, is a condition that, that people deserve treatment for. I, in principle, disagree with the historic basis for a lot of sober living homes in Dana Point and other coastal zones. They're, they're, they're essentially cash machines for these groups that can't do any treatment in the house. They're basically just a place that they, they stay. They bring them in, they get a huge amount of money and then bust them to other places for treatment. There's been a lot of progress. Cities weren't sure what they could do, if regulate at all, back when I was on the planning commission. There are some guidelines now and there are some guardrails to where cities can be a lot more proactive in setting up regulations and restrictions and violation codes that are enforceable. And if they don't adhere to those, they lose their license. And that includes the number you can have in communities, how far they can be. You know, our current plan by sicking our lawyers on, it's not the right plan because that's an expensive alternative. If we invested in pursuing legislation and rules that, that safeguarded against this. You know, my priority is always the residents. It's residents first. We need to make sure that our residential neighborhoods are safe and comfortable and thriving for our families and our children and our visitors. That's the first priority we have to have.
Thank you. Mr. Frost, same question.
Well, I think the answer is yes, the city's doing the right, doing the right thing right now. I, I do agree with sort of the definition of sober living homes. We, we want to ensure we're compassionate, we understand. Although we also believe that it's, it's not a residential use and it definitely changes the dynamic on a street. We have a couple on the same street I live on. But you've, a bunch of our questions tonight have been about the budget and about what expenditures are we gonna cut. And first and foremost, we're gonna cut expensive, unwilling, unwinnable litigation, right? And so the cities, the cities stepped back, understood what they can and cannot do, and gone after the low-hanging fruit where we understand we can win. I think that's the smart method. I do also agree with participating at the state and federal level, to the extent we can, in helping to rewrite some of the ADA rules and some of these policies, which have allowed folks to come in, buy a property, throw 12 people in there and make a whole bunch of money on our street. But as far as our city, what we can do, we can intelligently litigate it so as to not waste money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we move back to District Five. As noted earlier, when I asked this question, there are, there are a number of development projects underway in Dana Point and a lot of strong opinions on both sides, on both sides in regard to support. One issue that tends to, to arise with new projects are the developers seeking variances to build bigger buildings and in some cases, providing less parking that's currently required by the city's regulation. What is your view of development in Dana Point as a whole? And how would you address the variance request? Mr. Villar.
Yeah, thanks for that question. Simply put, variances would, would be, it'd be very rare that I would think that a variance is, is necessary. Just like Gary was talking about, there, there'd have to be a need, right? You'd have to, you'd have to really have a convincing argument as to why you would, you would need a variance. Responsible development, it's, it's critical for us in Dana Point and in Capo Beach, right? You know, right now, we're looking at, at the Bus Yard development. And I was fortunate enough to sit on one of the calls there. And it sounds like there's some good back and forth going on between the developer and the committee that's on there. And that's really what we want to see, right? We love Dana Point, we love Capo Beach, we want to keep Capo, Capo, right? We don't want to have giant high-rise apartment complexes and, and huge giant hotels. You know, we, we want to make sure that we are, we are developing responsibly, keeping the residents in mind first. But, but also we do want to grow our city. You know, you look at P C H here in Capo Beach, there's a lot of empty lots there, right? That, that we would like to see some, some development there. But, but as long as it's done responsibly and, and within the, the structure or the confines of a beach community and, and understanding who we are as a community. And nobody understands that better than our residents, right? Our residents understand what Dana Point is all about, what Capo Beach is all about, not some outside huge corporation that's gonna come and, and gonna want to build, you know, make us into another Long Beach or whatever it is. So, you know, as long as our response, our, our, our development is responsible and we have some back and forth conversation about that from residents and the model that, that I'm seeing so far at, at the Bus Yard seems to be the right approach and, and something that, that, that I would support.
Okay, thank you very much. This question now goes to Mr. Beebe.
Yeah, the code is the city code for a reason. It's there to protect us from overzealous developers. I'd support the code wherever I could. As far as, as there's, there's, there's channels to seek. As far as variances are concerned, there's, there's channels to seek change to the code. That's, that's the purpose for the city council is to weigh these issues as a whole and, and independently. Most importantly, I, I think, again, I'd like to state that my platform is that of my constituents. I'd like to institute a monthly district meeting so that I can bring these issues to the constituency and we can discuss them. I don't think I have all the answers. I'm open-minded and I'm willing to listen. If the code isn't working for us, then we can change it as long as we do it legally. But seeking variances to something that's already been voted on, I think I'm kind of in line with everybody else on this one. I, it's not, it's not a good practice to, it's, it's a floodgate that we don't want to open, essentially. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And now this final question is for all the candidates. Elections in forums like this often focus on the negative and what's wrong and how can we fix issues? To end this forum on a positive note, tell us what's good about Dana Point and what motivates you to serve on council? And start with Mr. Newkirk.
Thank you very much. I'm an Orange County native. I spent all of my youth spending every penny I could get to get to the beaches. And Dana Point was a destination. I was one of those kids that used to run the gauntlet to get down to Salt Creek to surf when it was private property. We're blessed with the, the beaches we have, the harbor that we've recently, relatively recently had land with us. And the community that Capo and, and District Four, the Lannan Village, are some of the most unique, diverse communities you could imagine. I mean, our Lannan District, we've got a, a huge percentage of people that are renters, which is great. It's a gateway for people to own a place in the coastal zone. Our harbor is under, under renovation. We have Doheny Village that has so much potential and we have so much buildable potential in, in, in the town center. I, I look at it, we have an opportunity to do something great once in this town and that will be our legacy. And we're fortunate in that it's gonna be on our shoulders. And it's gonna be our, our reputation, what people think of us, what our children think of us and what we left them. We've got the best structure that you could imagine, the best skeleton to work with. Our trick is to make it as absolutely memorable as we can for our residents, our local community and for our visitors from around the world.
Thank you very much. Mr. Beebe.
I've resided a number of places across this country. I came to Southern California over a decade ago and I felt no need to leave. I've been welcomed with open arms to Southern California as a whole and more specifically to the Dana Point, Capo, Strona Beach region. We've got a quiet beach community. I feel it's a safe place to raise my children. I feel that there's economic opportunity for me in the region. And to the best of my ability, I aim to not only, not only foster that for the people that are here, but also for the young men and women like myself who come to this region seeking better opportunities. So really, it's a wonderful place to live and I feel so incredibly blessed to live here and honored just to be nominated. And now to be welcomed, again, you folks don't have to have me here listening, listening to me ramble on. And, but that's the kind of, that's the kind of community we have. We welcome each other. We're friends, we're, we're partners. And I know we can grow something that's good for, for everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Villar.
My favorite question, what's great about Dana Point? I mean, look around, it's 75 degrees every day. We live a stone's throw from the beach. We've got such a great, vibrant community. You know, the, the biggest reason I'm running for city council is the, is just to think about the opportunity to be the first city councilman to directly represent Capo Beach, which is just in my heart and in my soul of how much I love Capo Beach, right? It's, it's my home. I've lived here since 2003. My kids have grown up here. My wife and I are here. We've got a dog that we walk around to the, to down to the beach and in the neighborhood. And I don't plan on going anywhere else. This is it. This is where I'm going to be. So why not be part of the community and try to contribute as much as I can to the community as best, as best I can? But I tell you what really kind of warms my heart is actually tonight, just seeing my fellow candidates. I have, I didn't get to participate in the first forum. I had to work. We've got three very smart, dedicated to our community candidates. After seeing that debacle of a debate last night, you know, coming here and just seeing the respect that we've got for each other and, and people that are just, we just want to be part of a community and part, and help our neighbors. It's really nice to see. That's the spirit of Dana Point. That's the spirit of Capo Beach. And why I love living here so much is because of folks like, that, that are on this call today.
And last, Mr. Frost.
Yeah, tough question, actually. I can't answer this in one minute or in 90 seconds. But I'll tell you what, that's also a reason to run. I've, I've been here 11 years. I've really analyzed what people have done before me, some good, some bad. But in general, everybody's cared, everybody's worked hard. Let's, let's start, what's good about the city? Well, let's start at the city itself. We've got Mike Kilibrue there. Very, very intelligent financially. He's been in the community 20 years, very much a modest spender and, and does very well for our community. Let's go to the chamber. Vicky yourself, a lot of passion there, right? Brenda, the new development director, fantastic. Our economic development director is fantastic, working with the chamber and trying to build, bring in new businesses. We've got a whole bunch of new enthusiastic investments going in. How about Danielle at Maison, bringing in Maison as well as Giannis, which is darn close to me. Blake, young guy up at the, up at Craft House. How about, I'm just thinking of the my walk I take every morning, by the way. How about Stillwater? Damien, a lot of, lot of investment there as well as Waterman's. I'm sure I'm forgetting somebody. How about Mike Foster at Killer Dana, just opened up a new shop? There is a fantastic amount of enthusiasm here. And, and honestly, we can do it right going forward. We can maintain the charm and we can We can maintain the charm and we can still bring in the investment and the enthusiasm.
Okay, well, that was the last question of night and guess what? You all survived. We'll soon be coming to a close of our program. But before we do, it's now time to give each of our candidates one minute to present their closing statement to the citizens of Dana Point. And we're going to start off with Mr. Gary Newkirk.
Thank you for hosting this, giving us the opportunity to share our visions, many of them collective and 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 agree in agreement. Um, we have a city that's, we all agree is worth fighting for. Um, I've been fortunate to have traveled through most of my career and see really a lot of great places around the world. I always look forward to coming, coming home to Dana Point. Um, that's why I got involved initially, uh, because I always viewed that we need to protect our residents. We need to look to the residents for their voices, for their input and make sure they're part of the process. Um, I feel that my experience on the planning commission for five and a half years and on the task force gives me that experience and depth to understand the process, the procedures. And and the perspective of what's happened in the past, because there's a lot in play, there's a lot at stake. And as I said before, we have a chance to do things great once, and I want to be part of what makes Dana Point a memorable, lasting memory.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Mike Frost.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, I've been active since day one, um, primarily with the Lantern Village Association. Uh, but also um, active with the city, learning about what it takes to be a good council member. And and again, I I'm going to go back to number one, solutions-oriented mindset. Um, we can identify issues and we should, however, it's our job to solve them and move forward. Uh, and then also, and this is what I've learned again at these forums, at the council chambers. What, uh, bringing a well-rounded understanding of what it takes. And again, we perform three roles as at the council. Strategy, branding, long-term vision. How do we place the Dana Point product? Among other coastal towns in California. How do we connect the Lantern District? Operationally, we focus on finances, manage it with a conservative mindset. And then finally, community engagement, which the, which um, which we should all be doing at this point with districting. It gives us the opportunity to reach out to our constituents.
And and sorry, Mike, that's the end of your time. And so now we're going to move on to Mr. Benjamin Beebe.
Uh, first and foremost, I feel very grateful to be a resident of Southern California and more specifically Dana Point. I. I really seek to serve. It's as simple as that. I seek to be of service to my fellow man. And and I would love, I would, I would be honored to be of service to our community, extremely honored. And regardless of the outcome of this election, I intend to be involved in our community and and I hope that the other candidates will uh. Will consider me for eh, eh, any eh, any sort of uh, any sort of. Commissions or committees where there's. Passionate and compassionate guidance needed. I I seek to grow personally and professionally while affecting positive change in our community. And this entire experience has has been. A wonderful experience for me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Benjamin. And next up is Michael Vilar.
Thank you again. Uh, what what I hope that I'm expressing to you in the best way that I can is how connected I am to Capital Beach. I hope my my Capital Beach neighbors that are out here listening to this call and watching me right now. Understand how connected I am to 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 Capital Beach and and how embedded I am into this community and how well I understand the community. And I'm just going to give you a quick example that actually happened to me just a couple of days ago. So I I got on a, on a Zoom call. I I got some of my volunteers together and said, hey, we're going to try to go pass out some flyers this Saturday. We're going to meet at Palisades and we're going to pass out some flyers. Probably had a dozen families on the call. Every single one of those families, I coached their kids 12 years ago in baseball at Dana Point Youth Baseball. That's how you grow community. That's how you grow neighbors. That's how you understand people. They're still with me. They still support me. I needed their help and now they're here for me. I love that about our community and they're all here. From Capital Beach, Palisades families, Dana Point families, a Dana Point Youth Baseball family. So I hope I was able to express that to you, how committed I am to this community. Thank you.
Hey, thank you again to all of our candidates for your participation in tonight's forum. You can't see it, but I imagine everyone at home is giving you a standing ovation. I know they are because I am, because you made my life so much easier than the candidates last night made it for Chris Wallace. Well, we wish you, each and every one of you, good luck on on Election Day, which is November 3rd. This forum is brought to you by the Dana Point Chamber Commerce and made possible by our generous sponsor, Southern California Gas Company. Would also like to recognize all of you this evening and thank you to all the candidates and to all of you in the audience. We hope that this forum has helped you learn about each candidate and it'll help you make your decision a little bit easier on Election Day. With more options than ever to cast your ballot, I'd encourage all of you to visit ocvote.com to learn more about your options. From voting at home, drive-through ballot drop-offs, in-person options like returning your ballot. Uh, via the United States Postal Service or personally delivering your ballot at a voting center. A lot of options. The choice is yours. On behalf of the Dana Point Chamber Commerce, I'm Dwayne Cave, saying thank you. And remember to vote on November 3rd or earlier. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.